This is August 18th, the Republican and the Democratic Commission. You have to silence your phones unless you do that at this time. I ask Richard to lead us in a prayer and Shirley, you do it. And Richard?
All right, now with me. Lord, we just come to you today and we thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. And we appreciate so much the weather we received. Lord, we ask you now to be with us just tonight as we go into the businesses, the business of our community. And help us to look at our next year's budget, some and other things that we're about to enter into. And Lord, just help us in our decisions that they be the right decision. And lead us, Lord, all the way through this. We ask in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Savior and our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Public comments, we have nothing on public comments. Approved events of the July 21st, August 7th, and August 14th meeting. The August 14th meeting, you've got a corrected copy in front of you because it showed Richard here. Richard was not here, so has that been corrected? Shirley has an update or corrections and additions she'd like to put on the July 21st. Shirley?
Yeah, it's not really a correction. It's just under on the second. On the third page, under the item about the parts of the playground equipment, after it says that Savannah had suggested an additional 40,000 instead of just 25,000, I would like for you to insert either a couple of statements or paragraphs stating that I specifically stated I was in favor of the playground equipment, but preferred funding than requested amount and then let them come back later if needed. Because that way, if somebody ever looks at that and wants to know why I voted no, there'd be a reason there. And say, why'd you do that?
I'm letting them make their notes, Shirley.
You need to approve with that addition?
We can approve with that update.
Next time.
And then make sure that that statement is, Shirley, what we could actually...
We can approve next time.
Yeah, I think we should on that. That's a lot of information to get that right on the July 21st. We'll just hold that and make sure we get that corrected and get that done. Okay, so we have the other two to set to admit that are much shorter on the August 7th and August 14th. What is any motion for those two?
I'll make a motion to approve the August 7th and August 14th. That is?
I'll extend the vote on the 14th.
Motion from Tom and a second from Richard to approve the August 7th and August 14th. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say no. Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Financial report.
Lindsay?
Y'all fighting over this or what?
No, Lindsay pretty much did this on her own, so...
She did.
Yeah, because I was busy with budget and she remembered what we had done and had her little checklist and she only had a few questions for me, so that's really good.
Up, up. That's a best run of Lindsay right there. I just am curious about one thing. As we get down to the end of the year, it shows on the general fund we spent 97% of our money. What is your projection for the next two months? Are we pretty well going to chew up that $300,000?
We hope not, but Savannah has some... I mean, I think we still have some things outstanding from the fire department.
Yeah, like there was a repair on the engine over the weekend. We'll get that bill and it'll be in August's report, but not $300,000 worth. My projection is ending close to two.
Close to two? What do you say, Lindsay? Okay, I was just curious.
That's my goal anyways.
That's your goal? That's good. I'm just curious where we were, but that's kind of... We've got those numbers are skewed because of other things that are in those budgets and in those lineups. We've talked about that already, about trying to fix our accounting system where we don't, we only look at what our budget is. And the other things, grant monies and all those flow-through monies, in something else so we can know exactly what we're looking at budget-wise. So that's all I have to say about that. Any other questions or comments about the financial report? Okay. Thank you all. We have Mr. Doug Gett here to talk about our swim season this year and swimming pool. And before you do that, I want to pay you a compliment, sir, because I've had numerous people, at least two, no. There have been certain people make comments about the pool and how well it was ran and the thing that went on and the success of having the pizza and all the different things. We've talked about that. And I want to thank you personally for the job you did and for making that a success and less of a headache for City Hall. But I think it's still a headache for City Hall.
I wouldn't say that. It's probably still a headache. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Savannah. This is just a brief overview. I'm a members guy, so bear with me just a few minutes. It's not going to take as much time or effort. It's a very positive and uplifting report. But we just really had a completely successful swim season. I can't even begin to tell you how successful it was. But if you just want to look at attendance for the entire season, we were up 5,000 or we were up 973, or 23% over 2024. We had 5,120 swimmers. My goal, you know, Leslie thinks I'm crazy because I have goals for the pool. Heaven forbid you have goals and think... I wanted to do 5,000 swimmers this year. Do I have any control over that? None other than my customer support skills. And I'll tell you right now that the people come back because me and my lifeguards mission by name and their kids by name. If they were teachers or preachers or whatever, we spoke to them coming in and we spoke to them going out. So a lot of that goes a long way towards building a rapport. And the pool is just a vital asset. So let's just jump right in. Not that any of you care. We had zero rain days in 2024 for a total of 50 swim days. Now, this year, after the mayor came out and observed the pool, we agreed to try to stay open an extra week. So man, I needed to recruit lifeguards before they went to college and high school. Were able to do that. So in 2025, we actually had four rain days. Right before the 4th of July and the week after, we had just horrible weather. I mean, we had days where we had 12 swimmers and we had $18 in sales at the concession stand. And you just look at yourself like, what the heck am I doing here? But anyway, we had 54 swim days and we averaged right at 95 swimmers in 2025, which is up over 12 from the previous year. May not mean anything to you, but to me, it meant we're doing something right. We're bringing people out once. So admissions, the pool is not going to ever probably create a million-dollar profit, to be honest with you. But it did generate $14,296 in revenue just off of admissions. And by admissions, we mean the people that paid, which would have been 4,765. That doesn't count the under ones that swim for free and the over 65s that swim for free. And we don't really have a really good grasp yet on how many pool passes we sell and how many that income passes. But anyway, we have revenue almost of $15,000. It's an increase of 29% over 2024. It's the largest amount since 2021, the year after COVID. So we're doing something right. We're trending upwards. Okay, for the swimming year of 2005 to 2017, the pool actually had private parties, which we ceased in 2017. And that generated an average of $29,000 a year in revenue. So this year, if you were to compare that without pool parties, we only did 14,000 and we were down 48%. So, you know, if I'm around for much longer and we still want to do it, we're going to start doing pool parties again because I think they're the right... We get so many requests for pool parties, just to have birthday parties and things like that. Doesn't mean you have to reserve the pool. It just means we're going to try to accommodate your party, whether it's 10 or 45. We had a party this summer that actually had 45 10-year-old girls attended. And that meant they spent money at the concession stand too. And we made $3 per person coming into the door. So it was a great, you know, it was a great day.
Well, let me ask why we didn't do that this year?
This was actually my first full year. Last year, I came in two weeks after the season started just because of personnel issues. This year, I just wanted to, first of all, implement the concession stand, which almost everybody in this room that knows me thought I was crazier than a loon for wanting to run a concession stand. I just didn't want to lose, you know, revenue. I didn't want that $85 check from whatever group was going to pay us their little commission of 5%. I wanted the whole kid in kaboodle. And, you know, we pulled it off somehow. I used to have a full tank of air. But anyway, the concession stand has never been operated by the City of Eastland staff or anybody within the city until this year. We staffed it with two lifeguards. They were already there. We didn't pull them off their duties on the deck. We actually designated two people every day. Slow days that dropped down to one, busy Saturdays, we put a third person in there. When you look out of the office from where I would sit and you'd see 30 people standing in line for pizza and they only have 15 minutes to do this once an hour, you've got to turn people around. I mean, it's a crazy hectic 15 minutes, to be honest with you. We're just trying to get people in and out the door. So anyway, I personally don't ever see a nonprofit having the opportunity to run the concession stand again so we can earn immediately 5%. Although the Boy Scouts have already been there scoping out the pool. They think the concession stand is theirs next year. I'll arm Russell the guy for that. So anyway, this year, we generated gross profits of $10,703 from the concession stand alone. My goal was $5,000, so we blew that within the first three weeks. Until we hit our little lull around July the 5th, it was crazy. Then I came up with this crazy idea to sell dip and dots, which are, you know, our version is called mean meals. They sell for $5 a cup, two for eight, three for 10. The first week we sold them, our revenue jumped to $1,705 that week. And the distributor is actually the guy and his wife that own Maze. They'd only been doing it for five days. We sold 50 the first day. They sold five the first week. And we've sold probably close to 500. And next year, we'll have two freezers and we'll sell well over 1,000. And nothing we've ever sold at the concession stand has ever been a loss. Everything is at a profit. Some of our profits are just absurd, you know, absurd.
Maze and Domino's can put in a swimming pool.
Well, I'm telling you, you would have thought of opening a pizza place and just let them swim for free. Because when you walk in with that pizza, you would think we have a little Italian lady behind the building with the brick oven because people go nuts. Even Savannah says it's different. It's a different pizza than you buy off the street. They put toppings on it.
Or you're going to tell the story about somebody coming up there just to get pizza?
I am, you know.
I will write it.
There are people that literally come up there and ask you when the next batch of fresh pizza is going to be there. We'll correct one of our downsides, which is not taking a credit card or a debit card because whatever money they have in their pocket, they spend it. And at truth and point, two weeks ago, a lady came in. I didn't even notice how big her party was. She spent $82 at the concession stand. She bought, gosh, how many pizzas was that a train? She bought whole pizzas. She bought two entire boxes of popsicles, which would have been 24 at a dollar apiece. And the only reason she stopped by is because she only had a $100 bill. So a credit card, she probably was paying more than that, to be honest with you. And like I said, the party that had 45 little 10-year-old girls, they spent a ton of money. I think they bought six entire pizzas. We buy our pizza from Domino's for $6.99. We sell them for $2 a slice. It's a $1.12 profit. And why they think it's just the best pizza in the world is beyond me. But it tastes different at the pool when it's 183. It just does. And you're hungry, that's exactly it. It's not like you're buying candy or a pickle. You're hungry. That's exactly it. So the total revenue this year, if I had known it was going to be this close, I'd have bought a popsicle. $24,999 revenue and concession stand from admissions and everything. It's just crazy. It really is. Okay, so this actually appears to be probably the one of the most successful years that I know of. I've only been doing this, like I said, this is my first full season. But it just depends on your support, the support of the mayor, the city commissioners, the manager, the community as a whole. But it's more than just moral support. The swimming pool is now 20 years old and has not seen really updates or renovations since 2019 in this summer. We had to replace some tiles. We did about 8,000 tile work. And eventually I'll have pictures of before and after. But in 2019, you had like $76,000 worth of repairs. So that was just six years ago. And I don't want the City of Eastland pool to go by the wayside like Ranger and Cisco. I don't want to be talking in five years, what a great pool we used to have. It's time to cut up or shut up now. And it's not moral support, it's financial support. This is an outreach that you cannot imagine. I mean, we have hosted events that you cannot even think about. We hosted the Cisco Summer Girls Athletic Programs. They came over and trained for an hour and swam for an hour. We did that free of charge. We didn't make a single penny on it. It's just the camaraderie and, you know, just the rapport you build. Then the City of Eastland, the new football coach, and I want to do the same thing. We hosted the entire Eastland Athletic Program from junior high to high school. They came over and swam for two hours and just had a blast. We do senior ladies aerobics Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We have the lappswimmers Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. What else have we done?
City of Eastland had a party there.
City of Eastland, senior class had a party that...
Employment.
True. The City of Eastland as a whole had 90 employees that night with family, cooked burgers and hot dogs, swam. It was a fantastic event. But like the senior class actually came out and we actually had a business rent the pool this year that bought a pool pass. So my goal is to reach out to other businesses because if this one business knew that another business had done it, they start competing amongst themselves like, you can't have a pool party without me having a pool party. So, you know, when Stanley Ford decides to show up, you're not going to tell me to lick full and fire would want to have a bigger, better pool party. But anyway, what else have we done?
You taking notes, there?
I'm not taking notes. Got my quarter off. And even though we're not reserved for private parties, and I say reserved, meaning they've made a reservation, we have a big group of the... And usually if somebody will get there early on a Saturday, I'll let them have it. I'll let them decorate. And we'll really treat them like royalty, to be honest with you. The whole key to this, if we go back to private parties, is promptly having a lifeguard who's got a real sassy personality and let her be like a host. And that'll be who you talk to when you go to the pool that day. You won't have to deal with me or some cranky guy or anyone. We're going to have somebody there to take care of their every need, you know, whatever they need or whatever they want. But anyway, future things we want to have, this will involve Larry and Savannah. We want to have a polar plunge. And we want you two to go off the slide and celebrate freezing temperatures.
You realize who works for who here?
I'm just challenging. I don't work for anybody. I play golf a lot, so...
We're doing that this week or next week?
It's going to be the first time we get some really cold temperatures.
In January.
Yeah. You got to donate a handful of goods for the...
We intend to do something for like the local food bank. You can go down the slide and breathe in.
That was weak.
She's going to.
I said I would do it.
Well, you can say you can go down the slide. We can go down the slide.
But anyway, that's something we're going to do. You know, you're more than invited to participate. I'll be doing it as well.
Make sure and put out a deal so all the commissioners can be involved.
Absolutely.
We're going to make it a community-wide thing because the pool is going to go back to being a community pool. Next year, we're going to have a movie night once a week, just for kids. We're going to have an adult swim night with an adult movie. And I don't mean an adult movie. I mean like Shawls or something where you don't have to worry about. I've always said, if we have our liquor license, I can make this a million bucks. Pizza and beer, we'd have, we'd have a corner on the market. But anyway, we're going to do the movie night and we're going to have a lot of late-night swim and take advantage of our lights. But again...
Where's the movie?
Pardon?
Where are you going to show the movie?
We've got access to a projector that inflates and a great sound system. And we're going to do it just on the side of where the chemical building is. And we're going to let them either just, you know, swim in the pool and watch it from the edge of the pool or, you know... But again, it's not just your moral support. We need your financial support. The repairs are much needed and long overdue. And I really think the public has spoken. We, they've asked for repairs and the pool is in dire need of repairs. You can go out there right now and find any number of things wrong. We, I'm not going to say we limped it along, but the tile work we had done truly needed to be done and it was a perfect job. The guys did a great job. But we need to have a pool company come in and actually give us, you know, whatever, whatever things they can give us. But anyway, I want this to be a great 2026 season that's coming up. You won't be disappointed, neither will our community. But I even challenge you to visit the pool. It's not too late to actually take a swim. You tell me a night y'all want to swim, I'll get two lifeguards out there or whatever it takes. We still have hot weather. If you haven't been to the pool lately, you need to go. So I'll challenge you to visit that. Like I said, we're looking forward to making Swim 26 a complete success. I'll do whatever I can to make it happen. I just need your moral and your financial support. Thank you.
Got it.
Good job. Thank you very much.
The only one that polar plunged is that we can go to town.
You'll be the first to know.
Thank you for what you're doing. A great report. That's very good.
Thank you.
Can I have a tip? He started, the pool opened a week after he had a heart attack, like a major heart attack. Yes. He really deserves kudos.
He got out of the hospital on Wednesday and was at the pool on Thursday.
And was supposed to be in the AC.
And they had a work day on Friday and the pool opened on Saturday.
Supposed to be in the AC and did not do that one time. I know. So kudos to him.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great report.
And Matt said our thanks to your lifeguards as well. They were a great group of kids.
We're about to have a lot of boating. And next, we get an airport report, but it just is amazing. And Bodie Zeke, all yours, sir.
Pleasure. Kudos to you on the pool because being a Marine, I was flight crew in the Marine Corps. And people don't realize when you fly through the Marine Corps, you get to do a swim pool. I had to tread water for an hour, dead on the boat, for two hours. But testing the size of the passage of fall, you get your cool wings. And if I had a, in my hometown I grew up in, I had a pool that I used to go swim in after I worked out. Had not been to that, would never pass that class. So you might help some young troops someday that pass flight crew because you learned in the pool here. I guess that's, that's, this flight crew is a pretty hard thing to go through. It's a sheer school and all the stuff I was there. I'm Bodie Zeke, I run the airport out here for the City of Eastland. How many of you have been to the airport before? Okay. We support a lot of different avenues of our facility out here. We have one of the finest facilities in the state, I believe. Because we have people flying from all over the state come to us. They're going to come eat, they're at our restaurants. For 23 years now, we're official base for the Fire Service. The National Fire Service counts on us when we're in fire danger to base their fire pitchers and air support at our airport to support our local fire departments, our volunteers and everything to support air support. And we're the one, one of the few that will open the door. We just open the door and say, hey, here you are. We don't know rules other than help us save our homes and save our facilities. And a lot of the aircraft, I took away some pictures here. Here's some of the aircraft that have been at our facility during fire season. That's an Old Navy Sea King for firefighting, but they use it for fire tankers. How many of you watched the fire bombers where the air tractors on boats? Randy Bates said he tracked it from Gorman to Lake Leon to Gorman back. It was nine minutes, three of them. And they have gone three hours to help save the town and help, you know, we lost Harbin, but we saved, we saved Gorman. We saved a lot during that time. Let's see here, I have some other pictures here. I brought some. Here's a little bit of the history of our facility through the years. If you look right here, this is how it started back in the 70s with their field that was there, the hangar, all the hangars and everything along this line right now. This is where the old hangar was in the old days. And we've improved through the years. I moved here in 92. I worked for Joe Beatty, he had the Pipeline Patrol. And I took over when he passed away. But these are some of the pictures we've had since we've updated our facility through the years. This is the latest update, the support for air support and aircraft on our field. And we have anything from Citation Tens, corporate airplanes, helicopters. This is what the original, the terminal building, maybe the difference between there and now. A little bit, a little bit better. Here's a picture, here's a picture of the old days. I have, I found these old pictures I found in the old facility. Here are some pictures of some of the aircraft that have been in our facility through the years. How many members scheming Mimi from TV show Riptide, well, it landed at our facility a couple, a while back. This is, this airplane right here belongs to Road Ranger Truck Stops. They use our facility to do their truck stop over in Sisto. Their pilots are friends of ours and they use our facility when they come to town. This airplane right here is a medevac that was Sean Mosher's wife that hurt real bad in Greenland, flew to Aswellville and broke her hip. They hauled a doctor into Reykjavik, Iceland, fixed her hip enough where she could get back, get home. This Lear flew here from Iceland, the Bangor main, from Quikfield to Eastland in a matter of, a matter of about eight hours. So we're an international medevac airport. But anyway, she's doing better. She honestly is doing better, but that's a cool thing there. So here's some Customs Border Patrol helicopters come to our facility. There's some, these airplanes right here belong to some neurosurgeons living in Gonzalez, Louisiana. Their big, the big thing they love to come to our town for, bird hunting. They come in the fall and they come here, they're our biggest clients for bird hunting. And that's, they come in here every year, but they, they come here, they're neurosurgeons. I mean, their brain, when they come, when they're hunting, they're like Dr. Icy on Megan. Pretty cool people, very nice people. And then we also have the, being a Marine, my brothers come in. We have Marine Cobras and Hues come in quite often. Out of New River going to Yuma and they found our airport and they know I can take care of them. They've come in and out about, about every two months. I have a couple of Cobras and Hues come in for people. I forget the Apaches. Yeah, I got, I got pictures of that. Let's see here, I got, I got some pictures of the Apaches here. The Apache gunships come in also. And here's the Marine 53s, the big dollar greens come in. That day, I had 7,000 gallons of jet. When they left, I was empty. Two aircraft, empty as hell. And that was pretty cool. Then here's the Shucks, the Shucks come in from the, from the base over Grand Prairie. The Army Shucks, Reserve Union.
You can see it over here.
Sorry, I dropped that. And here's one of the 61s of the firefighting aircraft. Let's see here, I have a husband and mother here. This aircraft is kind of cool. If you heard some flying, this airplane about a month ago was just restored. This fuselage was at the Battle of Coral Sea and the Battle of Okinawa. The fuselage was just restored at Ezels. The pilot, one of the most fan of the world, gave us a flyby for the other morning. If you heard a Hellcat flying around for about an hour, he gave us an airshow over our airport. And this airplane, the pilot, the guy that flew this in that battle was 105. He, last year, he was at the Ezels, he signed the fuselage and he was the one who flew it. But pretty cool. So some of these, some of the unique things that happened at our little airport. And let's see here.
Is there anybody else that works out there other than the few?
I've employed, I've employed a lot of small high school kids. Ramiro Zamora has worked for me. He's in, he's working at Rain Aircraft and Wake Program. Jason Zamora, his brother, worked for me for a little while. He's going to TSC to become a decent mechanic. But he likes, he started working on airplanes with me. Last, my last young kid I have is Chris O'Heda. He's playing, he's playing football and so he works when we do the summertime. He's playing, he's playing football and so he, he works when we do the summertime. So I employ a lot of high school kids to help, to help get them started in a positive way to be productive in life. I think, I think they learn a lot, I think they like airplanes and stuff. Right here is a nineteen twenty-three Traveler. These guys came from Oshkosh, came down through here just over by Ranger, but they stayed at our facility, stayed at our town for a couple of days before they went home to California. Here's one of the, this is one of the guys that comes in and goes, goes hunting over at the, the, Castle Ranch over by Ranger Hill. They come in here like, in planes like this, this is a Citation Ten, this is the fastest production jet in, in the country. And they come in here quite often to our facility, we support them with, with what they want for their enjoyment. Here's another picture of those Travelers in front of our terminal building. And those are nineteen twenty-three aircraft, they just came from Oshkosh to the Air Show in Wisconsin. Here's a picture, this is a, oh, L nineteen Bird Dog, it's a warbird. Robert Joe Jackson owns this little plane. His dad flew one just like this at D-Day when USS Texas floated its ballast tanks so the rounds could inland to get the Germans. His dad was flying one just like that. And he has based our airport. And Robert Joe Jackson had that restored, his dad's on, what his dad did during World War Two. Here's another picture of the Marine Fifty-Three's, I don't think they are on our ramp. They're huge. Another picture of a Shnuck by our facility right in front of our terminal building.
That is a good place.
Oh yeah, they're, they're pretty, pretty neat. And really, y'all, y'all wake up, woke up April third at five-thirty in the morning, we saw what happened. And when they said it's straight line winds, but it was an actual tornado, because there's no way that could have been just straight line winds, but. We lost five airplanes and three hangars during that, a lot of damage at our field. But the, the neat thing about that morning was, as bad as it was, when it touched down, people realized at five-thirty in the morning, how many kids would have been busted up? The god miracle was that no one got hurt. We lost lots of equipment and stuff, but we lost lots of stuff. But no one, no one got hurt, that was the, maybe a miracle to them. But, we had, because this air, this hangar, I bought from Bill Hoffman, and it was over in this side of the facility. And it got tumbled in the fence on the other side of the deal. The, this is a detailed bonanza. It was looked like a soccer ball across the ramp and into the, on the deal. The neat thing about that was, we had about thirty people, volunteers, just show up to help out on Friday. This happened Thursday morning, Friday, the whole ramp was full of people helping, like fire ants, helping clean up. And then jumped and helped out, it was pretty cool. So, we had a lot of different people, a lot of different avenues, where it's pretty neat how people volunteered, our airport community jumped and helped. So we can get our airport back in operation. Because I had to notice them closed, noticed the air vent, it was something I was required to do. So if our airport's not safe to land on, I'll let the FAA know, hey, we were cleaning up, we had a problem. By Sunday morning, I was able to reopen here. It was, it was pretty cool. But this is, if you look right here, this is where I grew up too, this is Eva Iron's jet, this is their hangar. The tornado actually sucked the skin right off it. But the miracle was, if you would say, this is my shop right next door, and if you look right there, the, my shop was barely damaged. And I had an eighty-year-old, one of three flyable, little twin-engine airplane in my hangar, I'm Jack's, and it was not touched. I could have lost it all, but it did, it was one of those things. Winds and weather, you don't, can't predict them. But that's some of the pictures of the, of the damage that was happening April third, so we're, we're in cleanup now. As of right now, the contractor has finished rebuilding the carport, which is, let's see, where is it? I have the carport, I have a picture of it. Right here, the carport's right here, this small, this has been rebuilt. And the contract should be here next week to start rebuilding the hangar here on the end to rebuild this. And that same contractor is gonna rebuild the hangar where Eva Iron's hangar was. And that hangar's gonna be a third bigger than what originally was beginning was. So it'll be good for our, for our community and things like that, so. Any questions about the airport, anything like that? Any, any, any questions about what goes on up there other than that? We have an EA chapter, nine-five-six, which is our experimental aircraft chapter. We're having a Young Eagles event on the twenty-fifth of October. Where young kids can come out and get their first flight ever. Volunteer pilots that are certified with the EA and go through safety credentials, but we'll give the kids, anyone that's never been on a flight, get their first flight. Will be there at eight o'clock in the morning till eleven, so, kids come out. And I'm gonna have some other pilots there to answer questions, some local kids that have grown, become pilots. Merrick Brooks, Walker Brooks' son, learned to fly out here at the airport, where he quit riding bulls. And now he's one of the most advanced pilots in the country. And then, and then we have a bunch of other pilots gonna come over, kind of talk about airplanes and get interest in aviation. Because aviation is a, a very neat business to be in. Mechanicking, piloting, different avenues. I got my start in Marine Corps, but a lot of people can start in different directions, it's, it's wide open. It's only a hundred years old, and it's still growing. And we, we have so much to grow with aviation. And our town is part of that, and our airport's part of that, it's pretty neat.
You like that, huh? Thank you, go ahead.
I have kind of probably a dumb question, but it little, shows how little I know. Are all the flights that come in daily, are, are those scheduled and everywhere, do you know, or is, or do, do some of them land when no one's at the airport?
Our airport's a general aviation airport, and so they can come and go as a C fit. We have a lot of scoop traffic from Weatherford, Grand Prairie, places like that, uses this as a cross-country location. Is to go across country, you fly further than fifty miles, for the logbook. So a lot of people come in like that, we have a lot of medevacs during, during the COVID, COVID years. I was out there three times a night in Kingers, people went out and get medevacs out here to save lives. And I was getting called all the time, get, for the medevac people, so you know, get people where they needed to be going to get the care they need.
Shirley's question, does someone need to come here to get fuel, do you have to be on site to give them fuel?
No, we have a self-service system, but, but for certain types of, like jet fuel, things like that, I need to be there. But I, when I'm not able to be there, I have people that help me fill in for me. So when I can't be there, I have something to show up, always make sure that it's accounted for. Like we had the wreck we talked about, the power went out, I issued a note real quick to make sure, because the power was out at the airport. So I issued a note, I issued a quick note that we didn't have power, so people didn't land expecting fuel and we couldn't get anything. And then once we got the power back up, then I counseled it, took care of it. But most of the time the people come, like, we have a lot of pipeline patrol, the oil field, the power line, things like that. We have a lot of helicopters to do the, the power lines, like little birds, like you see the little, little Magpí helicopters. They use that style helicopter to do the power lines. And they'll hover right next to the power line when it's on live and they'll change installators out, where it's hovering right there. Oh, we were watching, it's pretty amazing watching plots. But they use our airport because of our hotels and the things that we offer here, that they come to us, because they know they can get, they can do their job and come and go. And it really helps our town, because it helps, because they stay, you know, they'll have crews, up to three or four crews, and they'll hotel rooms and go to Walmart, wherever else, to spend money on our town, because of our airport. Turns over.
You had mentioned a while back that because Charleston was moving up in the NCAA.
Yes.
That we might get some traffic off of that?
We, we will, we will.
We will?
We will, yeah.
And that's basically because of the length of their runway?
Yes, their, their length in their runway down Steeville, but ours is longer than theirs right now. So we, we get some, we get some clientele now, we already still do. There's enterprises, they come over here to our airport already, and enterprises from Steeville's brought a car so they could drive back there to talk to us. The length of runway, runway length they have to have to land and take off, especially as hot as it is density altitude. You know, the wing, wings don't fly unless it's cooler air under the wing, so we need longer runway. Because we have five thousand foot runway at our, our field. It's perfect for what we do.
Well, you talk about all the planes and the people that come here, you make that happen just because of you and you being you, your hospitality and your skills.
Our airport's open to all our town, and that's why I try and represent it the best I can.
Thank you for what you do.
And if you have, I want your kids to come, come out the twenty-fifth of October and see what we have going on. Any other questions?
No, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Fantastic job.
Okay, the board of city commissioners is discussing action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve. The resolution of the city commission of the city of Eastland, Texas, approving a negotiated settlement between Atmos and the city's steering committee and the Atmos Energy Corp. in Texas. And with this is Molly Turk, and I'm not sure what part of this she wants to be part of, go ahead. Chief of Atmos Energy.
Yes. Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. I'm Molly Turk, I am the manager of public affairs for Atmos Energy. I'm here this evening on behalf of Atmos Energy, asking the council to pass the resolution approving new rates based on the rate review mechanism. As you may recall, the city approved the rate review mechanism tariff in the spring of twenty eighteen. The RRM allows us to adjust our rates on an annual basis to recover the investment made in our gas delivery system. Based on the agreement, Atmos Energy filed to increase our rates per the RRM in April. The initial filing would have increased the average residential customer bill by nine dollars and thirty-four cents per month. And the average cus, uh, commercial customers bill by thirty dollars and seventy cents per month. Following the filing, we negotiated with the ACSC coalition to finalize our rate. Together with the coalition, they agreed upon a rate structure that will increase the average residential customers bill by about seven dollars and twenty-eight cents per month. And the average commercial customers bill by twenty-nine dollars and forty-three cents per month. The ACSC coalition, which the city is a part of, has recommended that the city approve this item. At this time, we have answered questions, if you have any, if you have some ability.
Oh, I really wait, this is a deal we pay to be a part of and, and they've said approve it and get out of the way, so. That's basically what they're telling us, so I'm assuming that's what we need to do.
I'm making a motion to approve resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy Corp. in Texas.
Motion from Shirley to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, and a second from Richard. Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Molly, thank you for being here.
Thank y'all so much, and thank you for a wonderful partnership, we love being a part of this.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Item number two, discussion consideration, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Resolution, city of East, city commission of the city of Eastland, Texas, authorize the chief of police to enter into a multi-use agreement. The Texas Department of Transportation allowing installation operation of automated license plate recognition cameras. And Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way and providing an effective date. Chief?
This is the program Flock that we've been talking about, this is just another step, and what y'all already approved, to get these cameras started, get them in place. We have to have agreement with Tech Dot to, to put these cameras in their right-of-ways. So this is the next step in that.
We already talked about it. Eight license plate readers and nine cameras.
Eight, nine cameras, eight license plate readers. License plate readers will be out at the interstate, often on the interstate, and the cameras are all over town. Strategic location. They'll be fixed where they're at.
Do you know how many?
This is Scott's baby, so.
Scott should be behind the podium. Podium.
Go ahead.
Well, this is Scott's baby, he kind of started this, it's a great program, this is the Flock program that Weatherford's got, Abilene's got, Steeville's got, and Brownwood's. So we're, we're the link in that. So this is the program where, you know, a child molester or anything else comes off that interstate, it's gonna, it's gonna note it immediately and notify us. Missing children, wanted subjects, all that kind of stuff, stolen vehicles. And then the cameras strategically placed around town are gonna just, I was talking to the detective from Parker County, and they said they're probably trying to, they've just, they've cut them way, way down. Because you're not gonna be able to get through Eastland without being on one of our cameras somewhere. So this is a great program, and it's something y'all already, y'all already looked at, this is just the next step in getting that done. I have to do it in a great way, Tech Dot, to put them in their right-of-ways.
Can Tech Dot follow that, I'm sure.
Oh yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, authorize the chief of police to enter into multiple use agreement with Tech Dot. Allowing the installation operation of automated license plate recognition cameras in Texas Department of Transportation right-of-way.
Motion from Tom to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
I'll say it.
A second from Richard, any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number three, discussion consideration to approve Eastern Historic Preservation Board spending remaining as their twenty twenty-five grant fund. Am I missing a page on the front of this place? Sparked at number two, and I didn't know what.
No, this is from the historic board where they approved using.
That's just their part of the.
Yes.
That's what they did.
Correct, and so now they're coming to you to approve this six additional trash cans to be placed around the square. And the images. Attached to it.
As usual, I have a question. Do you maintain that?
We do, the city does.
The city does?
Yes.
They empty the trash out of there?
Yes. I think this kind of goes along with some of the beautification that we've talked about, and trying to give, you know, a place, if they will utilize it. It allows them, you know, maybe a few less feet that they have to walk, or something in the trash.
Good.
I'm making a motion to, for approval, I made a motion to approve the expenditure and remaining, remaining of the two thousand twenty-five Eastland Historic Preservation Grant. It funds about three thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars and twenty-two cents for the purchase of six additional waste receptibles.
I'll second.
A motion from Richard, a second from Tom to approve the historic board spending the rest of their money. They want to make a note that they're still gonna have two hundred dollars. They didn't spend all their money, is that right?
Correct.
Well, I mean, it's soon.
Yeah, they have three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five left.
Right, okay.
So they want to allocate.
Put that towards the pool park.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Item number four, discussion and consideration, approve twenty twenty-six Eastland Historic Preservation Board application in the Eastland Centennial Library. Who's doing that one?
I will, it's here in the office today, so I apologize, sorry. And this is, the first page is the minutes that were discussed. The Historic Board approved for this, for both of these items. The library, the packet behind the second page has all the information of what they're utilizing those funds for. And the total portion of the project's eighteen thousand dollars, and so it's, technically, they need an additional four thousand nine hundred dollars. But we have put in our budget to utilize our hotel motel for the special projects to fund this completely. So it will give them ADA compliant sidewalks to the library, which they currently do not have. So they'll remove an old sidewalk, remove old sidewalk, replace it with a sidewalk that needs to sex. And it'll be a huge improvement to that area, because there have been several complaints about not being able to get into the library if you have a wheelchair or something of that nature.
The grant is twenty-two nine hundred?
Eighteen.
Eighteen nine. And then you're gonna run the rest of it down with.
Yes. Yes. And then that's for the, the sixteen, eighteen nine is for the community foundation, and sixteen one is for the Centennial Library. But they're utilizing all of their funds that we give them every year, you know, annually for the grants, they're spending it all on these two projects.
Okay. I understand a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the twenty twenty-six Eastland Historic Preservation Board Grant application from the Eastland Centennial Library.
Okay. I'll second.
A second, go to motion from Michael J., and a second from Tom to approve the Eastland Centennial Grant. Any other discussion?
Do you want to note how much it is?
I'll be sure.
Yeah, I would say.
Which was a twenty-two?
No, it's eighteen nine, and then the sixteen one, is that, that's.
It's on the, it's on the next.
Is it the next item?
Hang on a second. Go back to your first page, the sixteen one is for the library, eighteen nine is for this next item. This is just off of their minutes, the historic board's minutes. So it's sixteen thousand one hundred is the, the amount for the library.
For the library.
Correct.
You got that?
So add that to the.
That's what's in here, but that's what's confusing, by the way you put it together.
Okay.
You got that? From Michael J., the motion is gonna add that sixteen thousand one hundred to your motion.
Yes.
And a second by Tom, any other discussion? And a second by Tom, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, discussion and consideration to approve twenty-two six, uh, Eastern Historic Preservation Board grant application of the Eastern Community Foundation.
Okay, so the Community Foundation has requested eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and they are going to repair some of the window decor on the balconies, some of the cracks that need to be sealed on the, the conelly, um, and any of the, if anything needs to be removed for safety purposes, they're gonna do that while they're there. And this is the same company that, uh, did the work on the courthouse, the restoration work at the courthouse.
So what's the total of eighteen nine?
Yeah.
What we're funding is eighteen nine, yes.
Okay, that makes more sense, because it's kind of weird where the four nine was...
Yes.
Okay.
Or the four... Yeah. So this one's eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and this comes out of the historic preservation grant they gave.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-two six Eastland Historic Preservation Board grant application from the Eastern Community Foundation in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars. I'll second that.
A motion from Tom, and a second from Michael J. to approve the twenty-two six Historic Preservation Board application to the Eastern Community Foundation. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, six, discussion and consideration of appointing Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Commissioners, uh, with the, uh, last B O E, uh, before this, this month, this past month, um, we had moved Norm Owen and Nikki Armstrong up to, uh, full members, and so that left us with no alternates, and so Jill Warren was willing to step up and become an alternate for that board. She already serves on the planning and zoning board, and so she's been, and she's been great on that board, been a very, uh, good asset, and, uh, Board of Adjustment feels like it, she'd be a good person to have, uh, as an alternate if needed.
Is she gonna be the one that serves on both boards, or do you...
We have, we have, uh, due to a lack of interest in the boards, we have quite a few that serve on both.
I do.
Yes, sir.
I know y'all tried to have one, but we've got several now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Second, then.
Motion from Shirley, and a second from Richard to appoint Jill Warren as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven, discussion and consideration of appointing James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment. Same thing?
Same thing, you know, it's a, we decided to give a chance on a guy that nobody really knows around here, and, you know, James is great, we, we, he's, he is great, every time he's, I've been asked to serve on the board, be at P and Z, I think he's served on historical, or no, uh, E D I, he's served as a commissioner, I mean, he's, he's, he very much knows what he's doing, and he's also said that he's willing to step up and be an alternate if needed on, on B O A as well, and Board of Adjustment thought he'd be great.
Any other thing to motion?
I move that we, uh, appoint James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. I'll second that.
Motion from Richard, and a second from Michael J. to appoint James Doyle as an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion and consideration of appointing Tammy Archer as a multiple municipal court judge.
In this, um, item, you have the agreement that's been standard. The only thing that changed is under section two, um, at the request of Tammy Archer, she requested the hours per monthly go from eight to twelve, and so for the compensation listed as two fifty a month. Um, she has said that she will be, um, as ten, she'll ha, she'll be here for a minimum of eight, and those extra four will be if she needs to go to the jail or do juvenile, so it increases that by four hours. And she's here tonight, um, Tammy, I don't know if any of y'all have ever met her.
No.
If you have any questions or anything about her.
Well, Tammy currently serves as a...
Associate.
Associate judge right now.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Don't care who you are.
(laughing).
All right, need a motion to appoint Tammy Archer as a municipal court judge.
I move that we appoint Tammy Archer as a municipal court judge for the city of Texas.
I'll second.
Motion by Richard, and a second by Tom to appoint Tammy S. Archer as municipal court judge. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Number nine, discussion and consideration to approve the purchase of a wood chipper with the wildfire mitigation grant.
Okay, so what, when we approved, if y'all recall, when we approved our bids, this is one of the things that I requested it to be, uh, declined, because it went over budget. Our budget for this is sixty thousand dollars, by the grant, sixty thousand dollars. Um, this has to be approved by commission, since it's over fifty thousand dollars and to satisfy any bidding requirements. This is the same company that gave us the price of the first one that was over budget, but we went and scaled it back, and this is a diesel wood chipper. Bobby is satisfied that it will meet the needs of the grant, and this is my request to have commission approve this wood chipper, at the amount of fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, which will be funded by the grant.
Wow. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Premier to purchase the wood chipper, fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars, forty-five cents, with wildfire mitigation grant. Second.
A motion from Tom, and a second from Richard to approve the wood chipper, fifty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, uh, to be purchased with wildfire mitigation grant funds. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number ten, discussion and consideration to approve an open bank account where consolidated funds will be deposited.
So what this is, is House Bill nineteen fifty changed, uh, court technology and court security funds. The legislation now allows municipality with a population of less than a hundred thousand dollars to, instead of having separate funds, you can now have one fund, and they can be used for the purpose of court security and court technology. So that allows us one less bank account to have to, you know, reconcile individually, it's all in one. I don't know if Leslie had any other...
Good thinking. The way that it's worded, though, is starting on May, whatever, anything we've collect, collected after then goes into this consolidated bank account. The money that we had collected prior to that, we have to leave in the old bank accounts to be spent as was specified...
At that time.
At that time.
But going forward, we can collide...
You just answered my question, because I was gonna ask where we've been putting that money at this time.
We have two bank accounts.
But you have to keep those accounts until that money is spent and they can go away, and now this is a new account under the new law of urban money.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna ask, what do we have, why do we need a new bank account? Just rename this one something.
That account wasn't...
You answered that question.
Two separate ones.
Okay. You saying more?
I'll make a motion to approve opening a bank account where consolidated funds will be deposited, uh, coming from the municipal court. Uh, account will be entitled Uni-Torch C D S T account.
I'll second that.
And a motion from Shirley, and a second from Michael J. Will that be the name of the account?
Yes, that means Uni-Torch Consolidated Building Security slash Technology.
Okay. Making that part of the motion, I was making sure that is gonna be the name.
Yes, that is gonna be the name of the account.
Got the motion from Shirley, and a second from Michael J. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, city manager briefing.
Mayor Commission, um, we'll start with the roads, the street improvements, that is all still continuing, um, whilst they're still not completed, the Pogue and Terry Street intersection, North State Street, we're looking at possibly identify, um, identifying a way to widen that, it's a little narrow, um, so we're looking for funds within the budget to see if we can, of the grant, within the budget of the grant, to see if we can utilize those there or not. Weaver Street is still, needs to be poured, Virginia Street and Lago Vista is the same. Lago Vista will be the very last one to be poured, um, as we're waiting on water line, the pump line to be installed.
How is that going?
It's going good. The contractor, um, they're working other jobs too, so their crews are kind of here and then not. Um, they've installed the line in front of the vague, vet, and across the code, and they're now moving west towards Lago Vista. They were here last week, but I believe this week they're not here.
Are they aware we're kind of on a time crunch here?
Yes, and they are working together, these two people.
But so we're okay?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. That's why the streets have kind of slowed down some too. They were mov, they were walking along really fast, getting them completed, and now we've slowed down on both of those, on the streets, because they're working together, they're trying to allow the water line to catch up.
Okay.
And when they come into town, my understanding is they want to be able to pour the roads and not just do a little bit here and there.
Wow.
Sidewalk, there's no update, um, we were told for the repairs by Tech dot for August to start, I have not seen that yet, um, it's still August, so there's still time, so that will be a better update in September. Fire chief position, we interviewed four applicants, an offer's been made, I'm still awaiting a response, hopefully by tomorrow I will have a response. Um, the firehouse remodel, he's expected to start Wednesday, and that will be underway. Beautification plan, I'm currently going through an outline to prepare that for y'all, I'm hoping to have that presented in September. And then, um, just our work on streets, our emulsion truck is near completion, we anticipate to begin chip ceiling areas this month. The street department, um, their crews utilized the dura-patcher with the emulsion that we ordered last month, and they repaired potholes in the four hundred to five hundred blocks of Sedosa, blocks of East Foch, East Pershing, East Connor, South Marsh, South Browder, there's, or Browder, sorry, there's, um, several areas that are not listed on here that they've done, but this section was one of them that specifically was worked on as soon as the dura-patcher was started.
Okay.
Is there any questions with that?
I appreciate you, uh, going, moving forward with the beautification plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Need some software? All right, code compliance.
Commissioner Terry opened up July with seventy-eight cases, he opened twenty-six new cases, closed forty-seven, and on his report, it said ninety, but that math doesn't math, the actual ending amount of cases was fifty-seven. Terry had to go back and redo the report, uh, we realized there was some stuff in error, and I guess we didn't get that fixed in time. Uh, out of all those, he had forty violations for those open cases, had sixty-three violations out of the ones that were closed, three junk vehicles, we had eight citations issued, um, twenty-six annual notices, had three thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars of fines that were assessed. We did have five thousand two hundred twenty-nine fines paid, that is, uh, Mr. Polio with, uh, property that was on West Commerce. Uh, if you remember, his, um, his, uh, fines were at ten thousand five hundred and some change, so he's paid about half of that off already. Um, had four cases, uh, that were abated by the city, we had to send the mowers out, liens were placed on those properties. Uh, amount of the, the abatement was nine hundred dollars. Um, we had, uh, one lien filed, um, in the month of, uh, July, that's for four hundred twenty-five dollars, the liens for the others will be probably in the next month's, um, report.
They, that's because they have thirty days to pay.
Yeah, to pay, to pay for it before the liens are placed. Um, in addition to this report, uh, Terry has pruned out the cases closed, so those were the forty-seven cases that were closed. We're trying to get you a, um, report for the open cases, we noticed that when he was pulling up the open cases, it kept pulling up only twelve, and after doing some research, we found out that's because out of the forty-seven that were closed, the fourteen that were missing were closed, and so that's why they weren't showing up in the open report. Those are showing ones that were still, still open, so we want to make sure if we can find in that, uh, the report section of comcape, how to get it to actually show the ones that were open, uh, whether they're closed or not, so we're still working on that.
When, when you say these are closed, they are resolved?
They were resolved cases, yes, sir. So either they mowed, they picked up the trash, they moved the vehicle, just then, uh, you know, they were living without water, they got water activated, it's just depending on whatever the case was.
The bottom one, the second one, the bottom says fourth?
Is that one we mowed?
That's probably one that we mowed, yes, sir.
Yes.
We, we mowed it.
Yes, sir, that would be probably that one abatement from, uh, that where the lien was filed.
Yes.
Voluntary maintenance.
They did themselves, yes.
Okay.
And then, um, Maverick Expansion is, is, is moving along, they've got the first building, uh, concrete poured, uh, we've inspected, um, the lines for water and sewer out there, and for the new structure, uh, new fire hydrant was placed out there, uh, for their expansion, they were required to install one to make sure we could get the area covered for, uh, for the fire code, and so that's installed out there.
Where is that?
Uh, Maverick Town Home, those apartments that are new out there, Lago Vista, they're expanding out to the south, where the area that they recently annexed in. Um, and then, uh, I want to brag on Bodie also, um, I came from Mineral Wells to the municipal airport out there, um, you know, you go to that one, and you come here and see what Bodie's taking care of, he does a good job with basically him being the only person out there for all intensive purposes. It's always squared away, it's in great shape out there, it's always clean, you know, it's, it's like you're walking into a new building every time you walk out there, and he's been real good to work with as far as repairs, for the insurance, Bodie's staying on top of everything, and before I have a question to ask him, he's showing up with the answer. So I just want to brag on him, I don't get to see him a whole lot at meetings, and so he's, he really is an asset to, uh, it's not just at the airport, but just for Eastland overall.
Yeah, Bodie, thank you. What else?
That's it for me, unless you guys have a question.
Do they have any questions for Tom? All right.
This is Murray. Lay one on the floor. There you go.
On the police department side of things, in July, the police department responded to three hundred and fifty-seven calls for service, we made twenty-one arrests, fifty-three case reports were generated, we had thirty-two agency assists, eight hundred and thirty-three business checks were done, we worked ten traffic crashes, ten domestic disturbances, seventeen cases were filed with the district attorney's office, one juvenile case, and we did nine open records requests. On the traffic side of things, we wrote a hundred and three citations, two hundred and ninety-seven warnings, the four hundred contacts, I know that's down, but we're also down on officers right now, we're training two, have one on the sick list, so we get those guys back up, that will self-correct back up to the numbers that we like to see. On the animal control side of things, we had two hundred calls for service, two citations were issued, three warnings, uh, we did sixteen impounds, nine animals were adopted out, zero were quarantined this time. We had six narcotics arrest cases made, one DWI, five other arrests, and nine warrants were served. We had one large narcotics arrest resulted in a manufacturing delivery charge, and also resulted in us seizing the suspect's vehicle through the court.
Is it Cadillac or vehicle?
Oh, sure.
Like, well, we got one time before.
That's where we're at on the police department, so.
Can you use that vehicle for a police car now?
Um, it's still on pickup still. It's gonna be a lot cheaper, with the lights on and stuff. I'll fix it up for you, buddy.
I bet we can find a good, good use for it. I'm not, what is it, a Toyota Yogi Camry, or some, Prius?
Prius.
Prius.
Oh, yeah, we can see you drive that.
Maybe Scott's. Good chief car, huh?
Yeah.
That one that...
I pursue, you can have a command presence when you pull up in a Prius.
The one that was seized in the past, I don't know if you ever heard, but we took it to the, to Abilene to a meeting one time, you were with us once, that Cadillac, and everybody, and people were like...
Spinner.
Yeah, we could hang on that one.
Eastern, so the city hall needs a good...
Eastland's, uh, City Hall needs a good vehicle.
On the animal control side, that's really jumped up. I mean, it just, the last three months, May, June, and now July, what's calling that?
Is it because of the chickens? You know, we get a lot of chicken calls now. I think, I think having two of them out there, you know, we've got the part-time one, she's working, she's working, they're both working hard. So I think it's helped. And we're at, we're covering seven days a week now.
I've seen one weekend, so it's good. Yeah, my neighborhood, trying to find raccoons.
Yeah, hope raccoons, chickens, we do it all.
Do it all. Okay.
Even bring a snapper, too, we round them out, scare their chicken.
All right, that's all on the police department side, any questions for Chief Pitt? Fire department side?
On the fire department side, let's see. We had forty-six assists with EMS, which is always really how we assist EMS a lot. They had two vehicle crashes in July, again, keep in mind, this is July, August has hit us hard. With injuries, four non-injuries. Seventy, seventy-three different calls for service or different type of things they did. So the guys have been really good. I was gonna give the commission just a little bit of update on where we're at and what we've been doing. When I got there, of course, I asked for mission critical things and officer safety things. And these are the things that we've corrected since I got in there. We've spent almost ten thousand dollars putting tires on units that were just, the tires need to be replaced. We spent another hundred and forty-nine dollars on four-clip cage, safety issue. We had four vehicles that were ten thousand miles past oil changes, so that's almost another eight hundred dollars worth of oil changes we've done. They needed a washer and dryer, the washer and dryer was, part of that was out, so we got them new washer and dryers. Building stuff is supposed to start Wednesday, as Savannah said. We're excited about that, we're gonna get that back up and running and where it should be. That's another thirty-eight thousand dollars there. Twenty-three thousand dollar, or twenty-three, twenty-three hundred dollars in rental costs, and we've got the guys out of the building right now, staying in RV. We had to replace a front cannon, water cannon on one of our tankers, that was twenty-one hundred dollars. We had eleven thousand dollars, and we actually cut that down, the bill when I got it back on the ladder truck was fourteen or fifteen thousand. And I was able to talk to a couple of other fire chiefs and cut out some of that and do some of that ourselves. But that's, that's eleven thousand dollars there. Well, all together, we've spent right at sixty-eight grand getting the fire department back up where it needs to be in safety issues to get the fire department up and running. Engine six went down, we have not got that bill yet, but it is back up and running and back in service. We'd like to, you know, go a shout out to G K B, they allowed us, they brought a big tanker up, so that allowed us to have extra water in case we had a fire service in Port Cisco. And all the surrounding fire departments are always great to help us out. Ladder six is still out right now, getting all the things inspected back up to date, so we're getting that done, we're excited about that. Like Savannah said, made an offer to a fire chief, we're excited about that. We had fourteen applications for that, four of them were really outstanding and we had a couple that we, it was a really hard choice, there were some, some great applicants in that. So we're excited about a new guy coming in and helping us get this thing go in the direction it needs to go. We're also excited about our dinner tomorrow night, I don't want you guys to forget, we want all y'all there because we wanna introduce y'all, everybody and, you know, just have an open core and top deal where the guys can see y'all, y'all can put faces with names. We've got a really great thing going over there right now and we wanna keep that going. We've added six new volunteers, we're looking at a couple more. So I really think transparency is a big thing that our fire department was lacking and we have changed that and I think we're gonna have a great foundation for our new fire chief coming in to build on that. And part of that's gonna be keeping y'all involved in that also and making sure that everybody gets along. County judge is gonna be there, sheriff's gonna be there. We're gonna have all of the heads of agencies that we can get there to show our appreciation of him. And we may make this an annual thing if the new fire chief wants to do it. We're excited about that, so we really want, and they, they feed good. Don't say that about firemen, the police officer culture, firemen eat good. Show up, it's gonna be.
Some donuts versus barbecue, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying those boys know how to eat.
What time and where and all that good stuff?
Six o'clock, is that right, six o'clock?
Six, six-thirty.
So it's their regular business, it's a regular meeting, they're gonna have their regular meeting, but they're gonna feed everybody first and we're gonna introduce everybody. And I'm gonna go through a short spiel on, you know, the county judge's role and your role and commission's role and all the different things that some of our new volunteers mount up.
Ladder six is where?
It is in Crum.
Crum.
I'm assuming it's where they bought the thing or where we got it from.
I don't know if some fire trucks ought to be fixed somewhere now.
Yes, unless it's in, like, eight, eight-six, we had to have it fixed here down here, but there's places that specialize. And this equipment is, nothing's cheap and nothing's easy.
I have six-thirty wrote down for tomorrow.
I have six, so that's probably, I have to go back. Six, if you're there early, we'll feed you more.
Part of the dessert. Anything else for Chief Pitt? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate it. What's next?
Yes, what question?
Budget workshop number two.
Do you have any questions on municipal court?
On what?
Municipal court.
Oh, it's not me. Municipal court, any questions on municipal court? That is my favorite little line. Really? Okay.
Okay, watch what they're.
Jack that.
It's all fair, is it?
Well, it used to say City and State or something, the whole thing.
City and State, yeah.
Okay, y'all have to pick that, fill the number again.
And then the community foundation, maybe.
Yes, we've got there, community foundation's got there quarterly report. The rest of them, get there here shortly. And then, do you know what our job is to keep up with that?
No, not yet, no.
You got a survivor?
Yeah.
Come on out.
By the way, now that you've got that job. Okay, we now have a budget workshop, this is our second one. And to approve the tax rate, you take a record vote, and we will do that after we do the budget workshop. Steve, uh, do y'all? Do y'all wanna take a break real quick or anything, you're, you're okay?